Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being with us this morning. My name is Jim Howell. This is a Board of County Commission meeting. Thank you for being a part of that today. We have a beautiful day here in Cedric County, and we have a fairly short meeting planned today. Today we have just one appointment. We're going to talk about Christmas tree recycling. I know it's going to be coming up here in about a month, maybe a little bit less for some folks. We have animal control agreements. We're going to be talking about that. We do have a very short fire district meeting planned, I think. Probably just be a few minutes for that and a short executive session at the end. And so with that, we have just a little bit of business to get through this morning, so thank you for being a part of that. Again, we are recording this on our YouTube channel as well as streaming it live on our website, and you can see it there as well after the fact. So for those in the audience, thank you for being part of the meeting here this morning. We will get right to the meeting now. So with that, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Dave Fulton, St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Shall we join in prayer? Good God, we echo the thought of Rabbi Abraham Heschel, who said, "The miracle isn't so much how things are, but that they are." In this moment in which we gather is a miracle. Your sacred energy empowers our minds, bodies, and spirits. And we turn to you in this moment as we say thanks and yes. We thank, thanks for the gift of life, for the gift of organizing ourselves as a democracy, the gift of all who serve our community through county government, from law enforcement to courts to mental health care to administration and our elected officials. We give thee thanks for all. We seek thy power, O God, to say yes to the challenges that we face in our county, the challenges of justice, of poverty, of violence, and of corruption. We say yes to the challenges, to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you. For all that has been, we say thanks. For all that shall be, we say yes. And all God's people say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Fulton, from the St. Paul's Lutheran Church for being here this morning for the invocation. Appreciate you very much. I know this is November the 30th. We don't normally have meetings on the end of the month. We do this month, so this is going to be a regular business meeting. So I will, at this time, call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for the date of Wednesday, November 30th, 2016. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Enrew.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Public information announcements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer. I have a few announcements for you this morning. A reminder that we will have our Calm Care Community Crisis Open House this afternoon from 2:00 to, excuse me, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and the facility is located at 635 North Main. This is going to be a great time for us to highlight our partners who have helped us make this facility a reality. And also, on Monday, December 5th, this coming Monday, 61st Street North between Oliver and Woodlawn near Ketchikan will be closed for repairs. And you'll remember that the road and the bridge were damaged during the storms in September, and we voted, excuse me, you voted, to approve the repairs on November 21st. The project is scheduled to be completed roughly around first quarter or early 2017. With that, I will let you continue the meeting.
Thank you for the information this morning. And back on the Calm Care Open House, the public is encouraged to come out and participate.
Absolutely.
All right, so they can come and go anytime from 3:00 to 5:00 and see what's going on down there. It's a tremendous facility and a lot of changes that have happened in the last little while, and so we want to see what's going on down there. So hopefully people will come out.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for the information. I appreciate that. Thank you. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
All right, I think I do have one person signed up to speak to the Commissioner this morning, Commissioner this morning on the public comment. Commissioner Norton, did you have a comment now?
We can take public comment, but I do have a comment after we take the public.
Okay. I'd like to ask Civil Strum, if you're here, please come up to the.
She just left.
All right, very good. Tell you what, while we're waiting for her, if she wants to come back, that's fine. If not, we'll go ahead and go on. But Commissioner Norton, your comments?
I just wanted to let people know that yesterday, a very sad day in Hayesville, we attended the memorial service for Randy Dorner, who was the Public Works Director for many years in Hayesville. I worked with him as mayor and have continued to work with him as Commissioner. Randy had been with the city for 27 years, Public Works Director for 20 years. He'd served on the Stormwater Advisory Board, on the Solid Waste Committee for the county. Had been involved in many, many things that had to do with the county and the city of Hayesville. It's a real loss to that community. Well over 300 people attended yesterday at the Activity Center, which he helped build when I was mayor. And it was a very fitting day for a public servant that dedicated his life to making part of at least my district in this county better every day. So sad day in Hayesville, and I wanted to recognize Randy, his family, his wife Sandy, his son, and his sisters. Very sad day for our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Norton. Appreciate that. On public agenda, if there's not anybody here to speak at this time, I think we need to go on. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
She was here.
Is she here?
She was here.
I saw she was here, but I think she may have left. So if she comes back, we may give her a chance to speak still. But let's go ahead and go on to the next item, please. Thank you.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of October 5th, 2016.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes for October 5th, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item B, resolution, appointing Dr. David Walde to the Wichita-Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Agenda item B is a resolution appointing Dr. Walde to the Wichita-Cedric County Access Advisory Board. He would be Commissioner Norton's appointment to that board. I've taken a look at the paperwork. It appears to be in order. I would urge adoption of the resolution, and Dr. Walde, for your information, will not be present as far as I am told.
All right, thank you for the information. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
New business, item C, contract renewals to provide Christmas tree recycling points for the citizens of Cedric County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Erlinwine, Director of Environmental Resources. Many people buy real Christmas trees this time of year, and when they're done with them, they often question, "How do we get rid of the trees?" The county has an option for them besides just sticking them out next to the trash can. We have 22 Christmas tree recycling sites located around the county. Ten of those are in the city of Wichita, and 12 are located in the smaller cities. These sites are where people can bring the Christmas tree when they're done with them, drop them off, and our Parks Department comes by with a grinder, chips them up, and the chips are then available for free for anybody to pick up. These sites will be open from December 22nd through January 23rd. We always open the sites prior to Christmas because we know some people leave town and want to get rid of the tree earlier. We also request that people try to remember to take the bulbs and lights off of the trees. You'd be surprised how many we get with the bulbs and lights still on them. So just a reminder to do that. Now, I mentioned there are 22 sites. Those sites will be listed on our Cedric County website, cedriccounty.org, or people can call our department, 660-7200, to have any questions answered. We will also be advertising in local newspapers and on social media. So we're trying to get the word out there for people to know about these sites. County's been doing this since 2001, and when we started this, we had five-year contracts for the sites. We work with the communities to pick the correct sites where people can easily get in and out and drop the trees off. So before you today, there are 16 contracts representing 22 of these recycling sites. I recommend that you approve those contracts and ask the chairman to sign, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I am curious, are these sites managed and monitored, or do people just show up and drop them off at the right place?
They just show up and drop them off. We have orange fencing around the area, and we have signage to let them know where they are. But it'd be too expensive for us to have someone stay out there. We really don't have any trouble with illegal dumping at these sites. That's been very good.
That was actually my next question. Appreciate that. I'm curious, do any of these cities that are on this list, do they have their own limb collection sites? Do they dispose of limbs and trees on their own?
Some cities do have that, such as the city of Hayesville actually has limb collection site, and they also do their own Christmas tree recycling. So these are in addition to what any other cities might do.
And I don't see Hayesville on this list here, so we're not providing a site in Hayesville because of that?
That's correct.
Okay. Does Derby still have a collection site for limbs and trees? I think they do.
I think they do.
But they are on this list. Okay. All right, well, very good. Well, thank you for the information. Any other questions or comments? Does anybody from the public here that would like to comment on this agenda item, Christmas tree recycling? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreements and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, any final discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much. All right. Let me just take a little bit of a break here. I'm going to ask you, do Civil Strums don't want to speak to the Commissioner this morning?
Yes.
Would it be agreeable to the Commissioner to allow her to speak at this time? I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and ask you to come up to the podium and speak if you'd like to.
I'd like to wait.
Well, it's okay. Before the next agenda item, if you'd like to speak now, this would be a good time to go ahead and do that. I'll give you a few minutes to say what you need to say this morning. Thank you.
Right.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Civil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut Street. I'm here because I purchased the house from a Laverne Becker. I paid it off May 26, 1994. While all this stuff was going on, I ended up not getting a deed. I have contacted the county courthouse about this, and I feel that since the house is paid off, I should get the deed. But I went to the registered deeds department, and they said they would not give it to me. And I just feel, how would anybody like it if you purchased the house, you bought it, and you did not receive the deed? And I've been paying a property tax ever since 1992. I paid off the house May 26, 1994. I went to a realty title, which, if you remember, had trouble. And then it got transferred to first security title, and it's been passed on and on and on. I'm urging you guys, give me my deed. I deserve it. I mean, if you bought a house, you scraped up dimes and nickels to pay it off, and then the registered deeds people say, "We're not going to give it to you because Becker did not sign it off." I have proof in my purse right now that I did pay it off. An appraiser also came to my house and stated that it was in my name when he did the appraiser, apprazo or whatever. And I'm upset. I'm angry. I'm frustrated. And I need to know why. Why is the registered dean holding it hostage? To me, it's hostage. I mean, I went down there and I told them, "Look, I paid it off, and I lost $30,000." $30,000 is not easy to come by. And when I called the postal inspector, I got the runaround. When I called other commissioners, I got the runaround. I don't want no more runarounds. I want my deed, and I want it now. And I'm tired of people telling me, "It's okay. Live with it." See, it's got to be, I had to say this. I tried to go to the Eagle to get this done. I have proof, if you'd like to meet with me afterwards, stating that I had paid off the house. The house has been paid off. But they put Laverne Becker as the owner. She is not the owner. I'm the owner. When I got the house, I know you've got two minutes, but when I got this house, it was a shack. You know what a shack looks like? No floors, no windows, no proper heating. I had to put new plumbing in because copper was not supposed to be. I ended up having to put a new roof. The shed was a mess. I had to put shotgun, yes, shotgun. You know what shotgun is? Shotgun shingles on the shed because the store, a lady came out, said this is a 1910 home. And I want my deed. I'm done with everything. I'm done hearing Laverne Becker owns it. And I want some justice.
Okay. Well, we've heard your comments this morning. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll probably talk with you later about this, I would guess, and get some resolution if we can, okay?
Thank you so much for listening.
Potentially, we may have some comments or questions. Commissioner Peter John.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make a motion that we received.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to receive and file. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for listening and believing.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go on to the next item.
Item D, agreements with the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners and the cities of Andale, Ketchikan, and Garden Plain to receive animal control services and enforcement through Cedric County Animal Control Program.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, before we begin this, I would point out the items D, E, and F, that all pertain to animal control agreements of one type or another. And even though they differ a little from each other, they're all the same basic topic. I would suggest that we kind of walk through all these at the same time and then vote just one time. It's up to you, but it might be easier for everyone.
If that's acceptable, we probably will like to do that. Let's go ahead and hear the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burnletz, Health Director. I'll be presenting the amended agreements with several second and third-class cities located within Cedric County to receive animal control services through Cedric County Animal Control. On October 5th, 2016, you approved a request for the Division of Health to establish and enter into new contracts developed with standardized language to provide three different options for cities to select based on their level of need for animal control services and to formalize mutual aid agreements with second and third-class cities located within Cedric County. The new contracts provide three options: full service, limited service, and mutual aid. Both limited service and full service contracts include animal pickup and mutual aid. Only full service contracts provide additional enforcement and prosecution services. The mutual aid contract was established for the provision of mutual aid assistance only for either the city or the county in the event of an emergency situation involving animals. Andale, Ketchikan, and Garden Plain will have full service agreements to receive animal control services and enforcement through Cedric County Animal Control Program. Cheney and Viola will receive limited animal control services, which includes animal pickup and mutual aid, and Derby and Bailey Center to receive mutual aid control services through Cedric County Animal Control Program. I recommend that you approve the terms of the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
All right. Well, thank you, Director Burnletz, for the presentation. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve items D, E, and F.
Commissioner Peter John?
Yeah, just a quick question. Since these are agreements that we're working on, going through, how long has the county been involved in having agreements with some of the second and third-class cities? This is quite a while.
At least 20 years. It's been a long, a long time. Some of the contracts were established in 97 and before.
Okay. I think that's important to have in the public record. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second from, a motion from Commissioner Ranzau, and a second from Commissioner Enrew, and no other discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. That took care of three items off the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on November 23rd, 2016.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that was conducted on November 23rd of the Board of Bids and Contracts resulted in one item that we're presenting to you, and that's the 2017 Recommended Insurance Renewals for Risk Management. This recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed for an estimated total cost of $728,214.70. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these renewals and recommend approval of the item.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on the agenda item? Seeing none. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the recommended action.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? I have one question. That is, this is obviously not the lowest bid. There was all the other factors thought. Yes, sir. All right. I'm just curious about the numbers in the matrix here. This is not the lowest bid, and I'm just curious, is there any things that were considered that were driving this to be the one that's being recommended for us this morning?
Let Mr. Mick McBride from Risk answer that for you, sir.
Just for the public's sake.
Mick McBride, Risk Manager, Cedric County. Commissioner, which matrix are you looking at?
I am looking on page 66, the items, something here.
Is it the five-year matrix?
Oh, there's different years. I'm sorry. Okay, now I'm seeing what's going on. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ranzau, straighten me out. I just didn't read the matrix correctly. This is just a renewal, and it's the different years shown here. So this is just another year. All right.
Yep. This is a five-year history from 13 through current.
Okay. I was looking at the numbers at the bottom of the matrix there, and I didn't see the top of the chart there. All right. Well, I don't have no other questions. I've embarrassed myself enough. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Commissioners, Deputy County Manager Golden.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Deputy County Manager Golden. Recommend that you adopt consent agenda items hotel through whiskey. I know that's a lot, but we recommend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt items hotel through whiskey on the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. All right, thank you. And since we do have a fire district meeting now, I will go ahead and at this time recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for the date of November 30th, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Enrew.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present. All right, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Is there anybody here from the audience who would like to speak on public agenda for Fire District Number One? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Counselor Yost, we're on consent, I'm sorry, Manager Golden. Consent agenda for governing Fire District Number One.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I don't know what the question is, sir. I was.
We are on the agenda.
Adoption of the consent agenda on the Fire District, items A and B.
All right.
Some move.
We, we have a motion and a second to adopt agenda items A and B on Fire District Number One. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. Any other business for the Fire District before we adjourn? All right, seeing none. At this time, I will now adjourn the meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One and call back to order the regular business meeting for the Board of County Commissioners. And next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Commissioners, any items this morning for legislative issues? Commissioner Peter John.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we had some discussion yesterday about the Labor Department rules that have been put on hold by a federal district judge in Texas, FLSA, and the impact that might have on Cedric County. And going forward, I think it might be wise for this body to consider at some point whether we might want to put together a federal legislative agenda the way we have a state agenda, because this rule is one of many, but with the challenges we face, and I think particularly when I consider the public works issue relating to challenges in the animal kingdom that have been a continuing opportunity for interaction between Cedric County and federal government and federal rules inserting waters of the United States. And we've had some discussions concerning storm water and a variety of other mandates that have come out of Washington. I think it might be worthwhile for this body to consider putting together a federal legislative agenda the way we have a state one, and being in a position to try and push for that so that the three members of Congress who represent Cedric County would at least have our position going forward.
All right. Well, thank you for those comments. Commissioner Peter John, let me just dovetail into that. I think some of the items on the legislative agenda actually have connections to federal policy as well. So I see your point, and I think that I would be supportive of that idea. We're in the process right now of updating our legislative agenda. I would like to see us consider how to add federal issues to that legislative agenda that we would like to see clarified, a position of Cedric County. I would be supportive of that, and I think the comments that you made this morning are very fitting and accurate, and I think would be the right course of action for us to take. So I don't know how to handle that going forward, if we would want to talk about that in a staff meeting or how that's handled. But I guess I'll just hand the issue over to our management staff and ask you to work that out.
Yes, sir. We'll, working with the legislative team, we'll incorporate that somehow, some way to add that to our legislative agenda for the upcoming years, sir.
And since we have all five Commissioners here in an open meeting, I'd like to ask, does any Commissioners here have any opinion on this matter besides myself and Commissioner Peter John? Anybody want to make any other comments regarding this is a good idea or a bad idea? Something you would. Something you would support or that you would oppose? I'd love to hear from you now. Commissioner Ranzau?
I would support this. This is something that we've had discussions about for a few years now. I think it's a good idea.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Anything else for legislative issues before we move on? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other?
All right. Commissioners, any comments for other this morning? Commissioner Peter John?
Unfortunately, we've lost, I appreciate Commissioner Norton's comments earlier, but this week we also lost Susan Goyco. She was the wife of State Representative Mario Goyco of the 94th District, which is the house district where I live. There'll be rosary tonight and a funeral service tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So, my thoughts and prayers are with the Goyco family. Susan's a dear, dear person, and she and Mario have been tremendous contributors here in the community. Also wanted to commend my colleagues with our invocation and flag pledge. It's been interesting to see that we had one university, I think in Massachusetts, that's they took down the American flag. I think that's disgraceful, and the flag burning seems to be going on in New York City now as, in my view, fighting words, but that's maybe a discussion for a broader way, broader day. I'd like to turn for a moment to a wider subject and one, for many years, and there's been a lot of disinformation out there, but for many years, I think over a decade now, Peter John family's had a zoo membership, and I recently received a copy of the zoo tracks, and I think they're on track for a record year in terms of attendance. The elephants are very popular out there at the zoo, a lot of folks going out there to see that exhibit. But on the back page of this, there was a lot of information out there that I think the whole community should need to see in terms of the zoo's finances and how the zoo's operating. This is a little bit, this is the 2015 data, and our communications department's been kind enough to put together some slides for this. But if you, the first slide we have here that shows the revenue for the zoo, I mention this because, you know, in the decade, we've had, Peter John family's had zoo memberships in my campaign and myself, in terms of our contributions, we've contributed thousands of dollars to the zoo in the membership and donations in various forms. And I want to get this in context because if you look at the chart that's up on the screen at the moment, the county's contribution, in terms of the county contribution, actually exceeds the admissions, concessions, and memberships. It's over $5.4 million. And zubilee income and other income the zoo gets is a little over $1.5 million. Admissions, concessions, and memberships altogether are $4.9 million. And I think those are significant numbers in terms of understanding the size and scope. We've got over 100 county employees who are working out at the zoo full-time. If we can go on to the next slide, please. There's been a lot of questions about zoo cuts, the disinformation that has occurred, and I think it was very, very disappointing because if you look at the actual amounts of taxpayer funding, and to just give a little bit of context, 1 mil in property tax funds, and these are property tax funds that are helping to fund the zoo, 1 mil is about four and a half, roughly $4.5 million. And you can see that in 2015, it's $5.4 million. It's growing, it's growing this year to $5.6 million and change, and next year it's $5.8 million. And, you know, only in Washington and in government finance would this be considered a cut. But there was a lot of talk about the cuts at the zoo, and I think it's been absolutely the disinformation that's come out from the media. I think it's important that the citizens here in Sedgwick County know that the zoo's receiving not only a significant amount of funding, but an increased amount of funding. And in 2015, there was a supplemental that I did not support, but provided an extra $5.3 million for the new elephant exhibit out at the zoo. So, I think that's very important numbers that, in terms of the taxpayer contribution that's occurring here in Sedgwick County for this incredibly popular facility, I think they're on track for a record attendance this year. If we can go to the next slide, please. You can take a look at the split between county taxpayer funding agreement, 48% for 2015, and the donations, contributions, sales of items, zoo memberships, attendance out at the zoo, 52% of the funding. And I think Sedgwick County's contribution here is incredibly generous and needs more appreciation than it hasn't received. And I think we've got one more slide left. If you take this funding of $5.4 million and divide it by the attendance last year of almost 600,000, that's, taxpayers are supporting each person going to the zoo to over the tune of a little over $9 per person. And the zoo's had an absolutely wonderful year. I think they're on track. They may be able to not only set a record, but they may be actually attendance of over 700,000. And there's going to be a celebration, the final zoo board meeting, they're going to have a celebration for celebrating Mark Reed's retirement, and they're going to have a gallo, but their December trustee meeting out at the Wichita Country Club on December 14th. And unfortunately, I've got a family commitment, won't be able to attend, but want to wish Mark well in his retirement and let folks out there know about the celebration and the activities out at the zoo since it's a very important aspect of what goes on here in Sedgwick County. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out also in this other section, I'm going to switch topics here just a little bit, that November 30th is an important day in American history. Interestingly enough, on this date, one of true American classic heroes of American literature, Mark Twain was born. Of course, his actual name was Samuel Clemens. He was born November 30th, 1835. And in an 1890 address in Boston, he let loose on some foreign critics of the United States, talking about the fact that the United States and America were being criticized, that we really weren't truly citizens, we weren't a real civilization, and had never contributed anything to the betterment of the world. Of course, this was 1890, and a lot of things America had invented at that point. Thomas Edison was at the apex of his contributions, and we'd imported, we had immigrants coming in here like Nikola Tesla, who even with his disagreements with Edison, contributed mightily to a variety of points. But Clemens, in his address in Boston, talked about the fact that the American Revolution was a turning point in world history in terms of bringing forth the idea of liberty. He said that, that time, quote, "We are called the nation of inventors, and we are. We could still claim that title and wear its lofty honors if we had stopped with nothing the first thing we had ever invented, which was human liberty." And he talked about the fact that a lot of the American critics would be, he called them examples of ingratitude. And, Mr. Chairman, I point this out because, you know, the way things continue in history, it looks like history continues to repeat itself. I would also point out the fact that on November 30th, albeit 1943, Franklin Roosevelt, Winston Churchill, and Joseph Stalin met at the Terrarium Conference and adopted and agreed to the idea of an invasion of Europe that became Operation Overlord. So, November 30th is an important day in American history. Wanted to provide that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peter John, for those comments. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give some public recognition and a shout-out to one of our citizens who won some, a national competition recently. A young man named Corbin Rios, who lives in Park City, entered into the apprentice category in a competition for electrical workers. He's a second-year electrical apprentice. I think that's a four-year program, so he's only about halfway through it. And they had a finals competition after going through preliminaries down in Florida, and he was, went down there to apply his trade in his competition. It was a competition, competition that was sponsored by Ideal Tools. But at any rate, this young man, who's resident of Park City, won the national competition, and with that came a $30,000 check for him to help him with his training costs and so forth. And secondly, the local union group, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, won a $5,000 check because he came through their program. But this is through their job apprentice training center, which is on 800 block of West 13th Street, but was able to celebrate with him yesterday at a little ceremony, and just wanted to say to Corbin Rios, nice job, and you represented our area very well. So, congratulations to him. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh? I'd like to throw in a couple of comments on a great celebration for the Derby community. They just won the 6A football state championship game again this last Saturday. It was a great competition. This is the second year in a row for Derby High School to win that highest honor of being the state football championship team. And this is the fourth time in their history that I could find, at least. They had one in their early 80s. They had one, I believe, it was in 2013, and then the last two years as well. So, the last few years, they've been extremely hot on the football competition. So, good job to Derby High School football team. Excuse me. With that, I don't see any other comments or any other comments from Commissioners? So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess an executive session for 15 minutes to consider consultation with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 9:56. The executive session is required to protect the county's financial interests and the right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Seen none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye. Okay. We're going to move to executive session. Be back at 9:56, no sooner than. Thank you.